Meeting of the Town of Halifax Planning Board here at 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax, 7:00 PM in the Selective Reading Room. This is Thursday, March 6, 2025. So everybody knows, the Planning Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be reviewed on YouTube. President of the meeting is the full board. Everybody's here. And I'll accept a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Motion second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the agenda for March 6, 2025 as presented here. Okay, the first one on our list then.
Should we vote it?
Yeah, sure. Let's vote it. If all of us are favor of accepting the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, first one on the appointment is Arnold Vera, Cyclone Review Application for MAP 73, Lot 78, Plymouth Street.
It's up tonight. Their extension for 30 days ended tonight. So what do you want to do guys?
Danielle, have we got any communications from Vera that he might or might not show up for tonight?
We can't hear you.
Yeah, we're not hearing you.
One second.
It's right now.
Can you ask now?
I can hear you guys.
Oh, we can hear you now.
Opposite end.
Yeah, should be the head of our team now.
So Danielle, Mr. Webby or somebody from Vera's project did call and asked for an extension for tonight?
Correct, because Vera's is up.
So they did contact for an extension?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board? I guess we have two options. We can grant still another extension.
I don't have a problem.
Or we can vote tonight.
A 30-day extension gives them to get two more meetings. A 45, you know, I mean, whatever you want to do. You want to do 30 and then look at it again on April 3 if they haven't been here yet.
That gives us at least two. 30 days with everybody, Brendan?
Yeah, I don't care. Is there, I mean, when somebody asks for an extension, do they have to provide a reason? Or do they just go, eh, I just want to keep kicking the can? Okay?
All right, I'll make a motion to do a 30-day extension on petition number 24 SPR 244. The 30 days will bring us from March 6 to...
When did you say?
April 3 or the 17th?
So it'll be in September. 30 days in April 7.
Okay. All right, I have a motion on the floor to grant the extension. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
I take a motion and a second with a 30-day extension for Arnold Vera for petition 24-SPR-244. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, I also later this afternoon, very late this afternoon, at 4 o'clock, I understand that the project manager for Walmart requested that they also push off their discussion until our next meeting to informally, we were supposed to discuss a concept with the Planning Board for a proposed fueling facility. So, I mean, they don't have an application in front of us. It's not that we have to grant one. It's just making everybody here aware that we will not be discussing that for tonight. So we can move right on to 314 Plymouth Street, Casco, 318 Plymouth Street, R&amp;J LLC, 340 Plymouth Street, Alja. And again, another informal discussion as to where we are and how we proceed.
My name's Lawrence Silva, Silver Engineering Associates.
Yes, sir.
Offices at 1615 Bedford Street, Bridgewater. And I am not the engineer of record for the Starbucks project. I am for the storage facility, although I have provided some assistance to the Starbucks project as needed during their permitting and their whole permitting process and so forth. So the request that you had before us was to provide an update as to how, I don't know, do I need to be here or is he okay with me being over here?
That's, I'm right there with the mic.
Okay. So I gave you a handout because what you were asking for is how things are proceeding because the Starbucks project is actually started first where we thought initially that the storage facility was going to be the first project that was going to commence and then the Starbucks would be coming second, but it's actually flipped in the other direction.
So it was not really to us. So by my understanding, the storage facility is still a possibility. We thought it was canceled altogether. We got no communication from anybody, whether it was postponed or thrown out or just withdrawn other than the sign that went up. So as far as I know, as far as Costco was concerned, we were kind of left in the dark.
Okay, and then maybe I can shed something out on that side. Okay, and with me tonight is Rob Peck. He is here also. So he's the owner of that project and he can speak to other issues that I don't address or other comments that you might have. Robert Kraus is here. Robert Kraus is, as you want to introduce him, the attorney for Starbucks outside of this, correct?
Yes, thank you Larry.
Okay, so as you can see in my handout, I gave you sort of a rundown, a bunch of bullets as to what I understood that you were looking for this evening. And along with that, there are some attachments that go along with some of the bullets. So the first, so the purpose of the meeting is what I understood was to update the Planning Board on the status of the two projects, especially since they are dependent on each other for access utilities and drainage. And then the bullets that I have below that was that, as I just stated, that the original schedule was to initiate the storage facility first, okay? And then that development prior to the start of the Starbucks, but it went in the other direction because market conditions had delayed the start of the storage project. However, the Starbucks and AutoZone project have stopped, okay? And it's progressing at this point. A new development partner for the storage facility is currently being considered and once a transaction is completed, work will begin on the storage project site. Both projects are dependent, as you know, they're dependent on a drainage easement which allows the water to flow through the neighboring Alja properties and to the golf facility. When you issued the approval for the storage facility, that was spelled out that we had to secure that easement and then bring it back to you in order for you to basically endorse that project at that time. That was the first condition of approval. So that actually, I attach to here is your actual hope and what the condition of approval showed. That easement that was, took a lot of time to actually work through to get the parties together with an agreement. That agreement, and the Aljas are here this evening, St. Peck is here, but I can report to you that that easement has been secured and that it will be finalized in the sense there's a trust certificate that has to be put on file and that's going to be recorded at the registry at the beginning of next week. So that condition will be met as of the beginning of next week. And then that prompts us to be able to come back with the plans that you will have as your working plans for the storage facility. But I do want to point out to you that in the negotiations on that easement through the Alja property, and I should show you, I can put up, there is an illustration in there, and that's the same illustration that I have here. And just so that it's clear to you, these are the two Alja properties here following across over to the country club. So in order for everything to work on that side, a key element was to have the drainage that's going through, and that's for the drainage for the Port Access Road area and for the Starbucks project. It will be routed through here to find its way to the country club. The actual storage facility drainage, which is in the back here, actually drains behind there and it's not dependent on that easement. Okay, but that one needed to be in place in order for us to be able to communicate this to you. And this thing, and you have this in your packet, I will be talking about this here. This is the joint development agreement, which is basically outlining the fact that all this work is jointly going to be done for the Starbucks project and for the storage facility. And that agreement is also in your packet. So in that agreement, the development agreement, it basically puts in place, obviously, a core sharing agreement between the two bodies and also sets the stage for whoever is in the seat to be going first is able to go forward and is not hindered by the other project not starting first. So the agreement itself allows for joint development of shit elements and that includes the access coming in, the lights, you know, the adjustment to the lights at the entranceway. There's a wall line that has to come in that's going to be serving both projects. The drainage, both the drainage for the entrance road, and I can show you, at least I have a segment of it on the second sheet I have here. So the drainage, the drainage on the entrance portion of it in here, which gets routed in through a detention base in here, and the Starbucks main drainage goes through a detention area that's in the back and that gets, an overflow from that is routed through here and follows that same drainage area and gets through the project that way there. So that agreement was put in place so that both either project, whatever one went first or the other one, still had the ability to make the tie-ins and move forward with their project. So that's kind of the overview and I did attach what I thought was some of the more pertinent documents to here that you can have a review and I'd be happy to answer whatever questions you might have regarding the agreement of the two and specifically anything related to storage, I can answer it directly, maybe you may, as to some of the other questions.
Well, my first question, well, as far as the storage units go, how many buildings are we talking because that's been adjusted once already? It was originally, I think, eight and then it got cut back to something. Where are we now with that?
At this point here, the plan has approved. The number of buildings is on it, the site is on it, that is what stands. If anything were even to be discussed about being changed, it would come back to you at that point.
Okay.
Nothing is, nothing is coming back to you at this point.
So then number two is what happens if the storage facility does not go through? You're in negotiations, everything looks good, but is it, is it your idea then until you confirm something with the storage unit project, the storage project, that you're going to hold up Costco and?
No, absolutely not. What I just was explaining to you was...
So how is that going to get paid for then?
Well, that's, that's between the two bodies and they have that all worked out.
It's in escrow. Like my half is in escrow, Starbucks pays that out.
Yeah.
So I've already put in, and it's in here.
I'm sorry, could you just give us a second, please?
You got to hide it. I know, sorry. Rob Peck, I've already put my money up for my half of the joint development agreement with the rest of the storage, sorry, the stormwater disposal and what we have to do with the street.
So that's the access road and the adjustment of the light?
Yeah, installing the, and installing all the necessary pipes from that that comes through that part of the property and connects to the eventually end stop in the golf course.
Right, so if the storage, not to be redundant, but the storage project goes through and they just have to tie in and they're good to go?
Yeah.
As far as the access drainage?
Given, given the progress of the Starbucks property, whatever's there and where we stand in terms of the storage and our ability to find a new partner, the stormwater removal disposal system will be installed before anything happens.
So more than likely at this point, the way it's been talked about is that Starbucks contractor will be doing the work that relates to what I've shown there as highlighted. Okay, and then once the storage project starts, that contractor will pick up from there and continue with the main part of the storage area. There's a little segment of that connecting road that would be completed and the drainage that goes out the back of the storage facility out to another section of the golf course would be completed at that time.
But all the stormwater removal work that needs to be done in order for the Starbucks is going to be done in the right, whatever sequence is, without any regards to what I'm, they're building that regardless of the story.
Okay.
And that's, and they'll build that in, you know, whatever sequence it needs to be done.
Let me just ask this, Mr. Kraus, is that, is that your impression also? Mr. Kraus?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there's no change in the plans and it seems that was proposed up to you tonight, Halifax was required. Based upon what Larry and Rob are saying to you, yes, but there's no change in what we're doing. We haven't seen any changes and we're, we want to continue and perfect what we, the C Department is to do.
And there's no delay as far as Starbucks slash AutoZone is waiting for anything else to happen?
No, no, Mr. Chairman, as Rob indicated, the joint development agreement is money has been paid in and we're moving forward, please.
And the last item that was needed was the completion of the easement agreement with the Aljas. And as I should point out is that within that agreement, that portion of the drainage that goes through the Aljas property needs to be completed by the end of August of this year.
It's state serve?
It's state serve.
State serve. Wall and pipes.
Yep. So all safeguards that were necessary between the two developers, those were taken care of in that agreement. And with the easement agreement with the Aljas, the timing and the assurances that that work was going to be done, that is all taken care of in that easement agreement.
Okay, I'm going to open up questions from the board. I'm going to have your hand up. You can go first.
Just for clarity, a couple of things. Has the agreement been executed or are you waiting to execute?
Oh, no, it's in your packet.
Okay.
It's just, it's been asked you, but not recorded, right?
No, no, you're talking about the easement with the Aljas?
Yeah.
The easement with the Aljas, there was an issue with the, what, the certificate of the trustees?
The trust certificate.
Yeah, it would have been had the registry already.
Tom Alja, 340 Plymouth Street. So the easement has been executed. We just need to sign off on a trust agreement.
But you've all, you've worked it all out.
But we've worked it all out. My question is, is the 125,000 that's been put aside here, is that, does that go towards the 340 Plymouth Street easement? No, that's, we're doing that separate. Separate, yeah, okay.
Also then the 125 figure, that's for the access road, the easement for the...
It's the work in the front.
It's all of it.
And the adjustment to the lights.
It's all in this, this whole thing right here.
Yeah.
We're digging, well, we, we're digging the trench for, and putting two 18-inch pipes. We put one, but R&amp;J puts one 18-inch pipe, Casco leaders puts the 18-inch.
What type of pipe do you put in there on?
18-inch corrugated to whatever the standard is that was listed in.
Because I understand.
Yeah. The answer is expensive pipe.
Okay, yes, Tom.
Just following up, the drainage plan through the Aljas property, is that different from what we originally?
No.
No, so it's the same.
It's the same. No, but because you had a condition in your approval, you said, good to go, but you have to make sure that you have to sign off on that easement, that's what's taken a little bit more time to get that going and so, but it's done.
In terms of the road itself, the access road, assuming that the storage facility is not going to go first?
Right.
Is that going to go just?
Just past the entrance that goes off into the Starbucks area?
Right.
The rest of it will be rough graded out because it needs to be rough graded out?
I assumed, I just wanted to hear it.
And whatever, and the utility pipes, the drainage pipes that have to feed back to that detention base?
That's all going to be installed.
That's all that needs to be installed. And that also then takes in the drain pipe that comes across next to O'Reilly's that comes in and ties that as well.
Just, can I ask our town's engineer, does that affect the fact that that road isn't going in complete, does that affect any of the drainage? No.
Thanks, Ken. You good?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any more questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So I would like to have the 340 Plymouth Street easement tied into the Starbucks plant itself. So that just gives one more guarantee that the easement will be completed. So in the unforeseeable event that something tragic happens and you go bankrupt, let's say, that is what would be a situation where gee, there's no money to do it. So if it's tied in with the Starbucks project and if it becomes part of their plan, then it becomes more of a must-do for Starbucks.
Look to legal. I would say the same thing. I would venture to ask our legal town council if, if in fact that would be a, would that be a private issue, you know, between, you know, two private parties as opposed to linking it to Starbucks or somebody else in that matter?
I could also work, like, give them security.
A bond?
Yeah, I could do something that in the event the unforeseen doesn't happen, we'll find some, that there'll be something aside that to do it anyway. Again, what we plan to do with this?
As soon as the grant.
And the timeline for this is we're really talking just a few months that their work has to be completed anyway.
We're talking probably in the office.
Yeah, right, to that section of the office.
This is within the four, very four people, which I don't think there's any need, as I understand it, Mr. Alja, you've been paid for the easement, the easement's going to be recorded, we're of course going to fulfill it because it's part of our, it's part of the application to fulfill the completion of the Starbucks project.
They won't be able to.
And also, Mr. Brennan is here as well, so they wouldn't, Starbucks would not receive an occupancy permit in the event that the easement is not completed.
They won't even be posted by the end of August.
Yeah, um, yes, that was my recommendation to the board. They had asked me questions about this, but from what I'm hearing from these two gentlemen, the work, including the piping through your property, is to be done by August or by the end of August.
By the end of August.
Yeah, so that, that would take care of that. That's, that's the work that needs to be done before.
But my point is, in the event that it does not get done, you will not sign off on the occupancy for Starbucks?
I don't sign off on it.
But you wouldn't recommend it.
Correct, I would not recommend it. Correct.
I believe we do have a letter in the files from our building inspector who said absolutely that occupancy, that although they have conformed to the conditions for their building permit, there would not be an occupancy permit issue until this is all happened.
The site was completed.
Okay, good.
I believe, I could find it, I can put my hand on.
And we're not going to sign off on it either.
And what is the road going to be, like the common driveway and the parking for Starbucks?
That's, yeah.
So is there, you're participating in that as well, whether or not the storage facility goes in?
That comes out of the joint development agreement, which is funded by a trust.
Do we have a copy of that at the Halifax Town Hall?
It's in your packet.
Okay, I know there's a lot of reading though that is done, so I'm trying to cut.
Yeah.
So, okay, Mr. Kraus, Attorney Kraus, can you tell me what you have planned for the common driveway and the lights?
Yes, fully, Mr. Chairman, it's the plan. None of the plans have changed. It's exactly as provided to you and permitted. Nothing has changed in our plans.
Actually, that, that was, it was stated in documents here that the storage facility common driveway would be installed prior to, so it's a very valid question to make sure that the town...
I'm not suggesting it's not a valid question. We're going to build a road as Mr. Peck indicated, it's 125,000 dollars to joint development agreement. We're going to construct a road as a condition of the, of the signal that the occupancy permit. We're going to do it exactly as the plans and our traffic engineer designed and which you guys approve. There's no change. There's just, there's no change.
This is the, these are, these are, this is a set of plans from Bowman. Bowman is the traffic consultant hired by Casco to, on behalf of the joint development to take care of the signalization changes and all that work. And that's, that's what these represent. And that's what's being done in order to meet the requirements and it's been coordinated with town departments as far as having it, you know, having it be something they can start work on.
Not that, but I'd also note that without that road being constructed up to the Starbucks driveway, the only way to get in and out of that site is going eastbound because it's a right in, right out only from their own entrance. So you can't, they wouldn't be able to be busy without...
They wouldn't be able to function, they wouldn't be able to queue.
I understand. But on the plan, did you see that there's a curve both ways and a little island in between there?
Yeah, there's a, that was requested by the highway surveyor to put that island in the middle, the triangular island to kind of channelize the cars in the correct direction.
So you can't go westbound from the...
I mean, you could if you really wanted to. It's, it's channelizing you and it's...
It would be a pretty dramatic turn.
It was one of the conditions though that we were supposed to leave east, so that like makes it a little bit confusing, kind of like we were talking about earlier with the other projects that's not coming tonight. They can only go off of 58 south to the right, nobody can take a left in, and that, there's no little island in the middle of it.
Yeah, that one's probably more inviting you to take a left, but this with that island, you'd have to make a dramatic turn to try to get in there, get a left turn, you'd have to go way out and around and come back in.
So in order to access AutoZone and Starbucks, you have to take a left at the light and go in through the light?
If you're leaving, you have to take a left through the light?
Yes. If you're going westbound.
Or you can go right there too.
But nobody can enter off of 106 onto the frontage of Starbucks property?
If you're going, yes, correct.
You can't at all.
Well, going eastbound, you can. Eastbound, you can, westbound you can.
Right, right.
Going toward 58, you can.
Leaving.
No, no, coming in also.
Yeah.
It's a right in, right out.
All right, well, I was under the impression, maybe I remember it incorrectly, but I thought it was only an exit east.
No, it's always right in.
I don't think so.
That's why we put the island.
Do you remember it always being that you could only leave?
There's nothing why we have minutes. We talked about a lot of, a lot of stuff with this project, so I do remember there being, obviously, there being a conversation mandating that the flow of traffic had to go in certain directions, but that's, I think, where our default to Pat Brennan would go to.
It was always for the... And also, I mean, in fairness, all you can really do is guide the traffic in the direction they're supposed to go in. We've all seen those like, do not U-turn, and I'm like, you bet your ass is turning around right now. You know what I mean?
Well, I meant by, thank you.
Yeah, I remember it without, and I couldn't go in that.
But you can go this way.
So why, why would you do that even if it's coming? So why, why would you do that even coming? Because the parking lot flow was only so that you could go.
Because you're correct, I think it's probably if you go in the auto.
You could go to the auto parts store directly without having a circumvent. That was the thrust.
But we didn't want to have that exit where you would exit and go left.
Correct.
That's where that was.
Maybe I should remember that.
Thanks.
It's not a main entrance.
Could I just?
What's that?
My actual request is.
Sure, go ahead.
Rob, RMJ has in fact, I think I heard Rob's mentioned earlier, they have deposited their portion of the roadwork money. So you guys are satisfied that that is there and available to your client?
$125,000 is sitting on my I O account.
Okay, all right, just, just confirming with you that your clients all split away with that?
Yeah, we have $125,000 based on the joint development agreement that you have now.
Right, okay, just confirming.
No, don't worry about it.
And you also from Casco have money in an I O account to do the roadwork as well?
I don't typically go to my client's accounts for their portion of it, but they have to.
There's money somewhere.
This discussion, this discussion is facilitated by some questions you have. We're prepared, we have the resources to move forward, no question about it. It's just based on the joint development agreement that the money was coming from Mr. Patrick and the 105s and his brother. So that's why I'm hoping. You can read it because it's all based on the joint development agreement. There's nothing suspect or, or strange about it, it's very typical.
And what it boils down to is with, out of being done the way the plans have been approved, there's no occupancy happening anywhere here. Nobody's going to invest that kind of money without having an M B M to get you to where you want to be. And they talk to each other all the time. Nathan Palmer and Rob, they talk together all the time to make sure they get through any kind of things that come up.
Brennan, any questions?
No, sir.
Rick, how about you?
No, nothing.
I'll refer, you have anything else?
No.
Mr. Hudson, any input on, as far as town council and towns, do reasons following and the agreements that were presented?
Um, no, I mean, I think the very important statement by Mr. Cross is that there, there aren't any changes in the plan. It's what you guys approved.
Bingo.
That is correct, thank you, Council.
For the record, so that people don't feel as though they have been inconvenienced by being asked to be here this evening. Big project with a lot of, lot of eyes in a small town. And when we have the storage facility going in with the road and the easements and all that, and then all of a sudden the storage facility is temporarily on hold for, for whatever reason, which is fine. But then the Starbucks comes in, of course, there are going to be questions as in regards to, although the plans haven't changed, the order in which we discussed it for months and even years at a time. So I think it just makes sense that we were able to have this conversation to make all parties involved more relaxed about welcoming these two projects into our town. So just wanted that on the record to say, you know, we weren't just trying to drag people here to, you know, inconvenience anyone. It's more of a, there was a plan, the plan changed, maybe not on paper, but in order of, and so therefore we would like an explanation.
Well, I have feelings about raised, other questions don't answer. I think I'd like to say the I's have been dotted, the T's have been crossed.
In fairness, I, I think that it should have been maybe presented to you to tell you that the sequence was going to go the other way. Because everything that had been presented to you initially was the thought process that the storage was going first and Starbucks. And so there was no thought about it necessarily, except for that agreement that said, yeah, we got to put this in place anyway. And the fact that it went in the other direction, it would have been probably in hindsight, would have been good to come before you and just tell you that the order had changed.
Yeah, and I think, but, but at the end of the day, I mean, it's, who cares? It's, it's good, we got this done. I think one of my concerns was more, and not, not to point any fingers, obviously or make any accusations, but we have a small town project with a conglomerate. And if the small town project, for whatever reason, fell apart, the conglomerate has the amount of money to be able to just move forward with it. And then it just, this meeting just dotted the I's and crossed the T's. I, at least for me, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but that is why I think this was a productive conversation. So thank you to everybody.
We just wanted clarity and confirmation that the easement agreement had been worked out, which was left up in the air.
Which is just getting to my back, you know, so. But it does state in all these letters that all of the infrastructure for the common driveway, the parking and all of the underground drain easements and all that were going to be done prior to Starbucks. So we have to safeguard for the town.
Absolutely, no, I totally understand. I would have done the same if I was outside the table.
All right. Awesome.
Any other questions? Anything to add?
Thanks.
You good?
Just talk.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry, did everybody sign this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, remember.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick, appreciate it. All right, good night. We have four minutes, we have some minutes, let's do that.
Do we have February 6th?
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, have a good night.
Take care.
Yeah, just let us know if something changes so that it won't, so it won't freak us out.
The worst, it's the worst for me.
We were arrested, no offense, that guy's hot.
That's what I was going to say, like I, I am. I'm not hiding from this town.
I guess.
Well, that's why, that's why we're also trying to.
Like he just said, it would have made more sense if they came in here first and hey, look, the order has changed here, we're going to do this first, that's all. It would have been, then there would have been any questions, what's going on or anything, you know?
Everybody knows my name is going to go up.
The way, the way they, the way they did it, how can they expect us not to question what's going on?
Yeah, in fairness to that, this is more on me than it's on that one. You know, I thought I would have thrown up walls at this point.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, it's really your plan, not theirs.
Probably should have said it though, but in the same breath, if the storage facility is any type of substantial changes or whatever, more buildings, less buildings, it does have to come, yes.
You look at it like.
I don't change toilet paper if the golf ball's going to come in somehow. Well, I will. My brother, on the other hand. That's why I thought he doesn't.
Yeah, we are being recorded, right?
It was, it was more of just, you know, you have a successful staple in town, which is, you know, Halifax Country Club. And what, compared to that to publicly traded Fortune 500 company, we're going, they can push some stuff through and if it's all in writing, their lawyers are a hell of a lot more expensive than ours are. And it was just cross some T's, dot some I's. Yeah, I'm sure you are.
Have a nice night, Robbie.
Thank you, Robbie.
Take your mother to Connecticut. Bye, Gail.
I'll bring her back too, I'm just going to.
Enjoy the ride to Connecticut.
Thank you.
Glad you brought it back up with you.
Bye, Gail.
All right, the next thing on our agenda, we had the minutes given to us on, you know, for the February 6th and the February 20th, 2025. Anybody have any changes, deletions or additions?
I would just like to say on the February 6th minutes, if some of it's going to be a word for word and some of it is not, that's, that's, you know, some of these, some of these, I have no problem with it all being written out, but there are on page four, there's some that's just paraphrasing. And so if it's going to be quoting people, then it shouldn't go to paraphrasing on somebody and then quoting on others and then people saying how things are said in other statements and giving like a storyline, like they're being a playwright. More if they're going to do a quote, I have no problem with that, but no paraphrasing some of it. So I would like it to be rewritten, that it, on the ones that are paraphrased and anything that would add any personality to somebody else's quotes be taken out.
Well, I'm of the opinion that that's what minutes are. Minutes are just minutes, they're not, if, if they're not a verbatim, they're, they're not a, you know, word for word document, that those exactly are what it is, minutes.
Right, so usually we don't have word for word, am I wrong?
But those are quotes, right?
Yes, they're quotes.
Some of it is, except for on page four, at the bottom, three from the bottom, Millius explains the process of getting a number assigned to a parcel. That's not spelled out, but it looks like everything else is. And so I find that to be, like if you're going to do one thing and then also other parts where Troop starts talking about something irrelevant, like if we're going to go with all quoting, then we shouldn't be going on some of it and trying to put personality in it.
So you're seeing.
This is not usually how our. This is just, this is a paraphrase. Troop starts talking about something irrelevant and gain our ass or not to jump around. What, 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 what did I say? And that, because that is paraphrasing while we're talking about quotes. So everything's quoted, but then all of a sudden there's a description. You know what I mean? It's either that we have all quotes, this isn't a play, we're not selling this to Hollywood. But usually we don't do these minutes. Have we been doing the minutes with all these quotings? And then all of a sudden it's here, back and forth, where there's, it's, it's a couple of different kinds of writing. You're, you're quoting in one section and then in another you're paraphrasing and, and you're giving description on how you say somebody else is talking. That's, that's not, that's not okay. And so whatever, you know, like if you're going to do your vote and get it all, whatever, I don't, I don't care. I have zero problem with what I say. I, I believe in this whole meeting, I was trying to stick up for the fact that we had something insanely going on, in my opinion, where we didn't know the order of all this. I mean, we just, this just took place. So we didn't know all of this and I'm a defender of the people, as we all know, and I get very passionate about it. So if we're going to do minutes that are all quoting, I have no problem with that. But there's not to be some quoting and then some paraphrasing by the secretary or whomever wrote it.
All right, well, my opinion is minutes are the minutes and, and they're just, just that. They're not a verbatim quote. If, if, can I finish please? Can I please finish?
But why aren't they?
Can I please finish? So bottom line, if you wanted to know what the exact quote, what was the exact said, as you say at the beginning of every meeting, everyone is videotaped. So you could go back and read the whole thing, word for word, verbatim, 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 right, right down the very line. But for minutes, to give a rough idea, to give a, where the discussion went, in what direction, it's not meant to be a word for word account of every meeting. That's, that's what the video is for.
Some phrases in terms of quotes are, are important because of exactly what is, is said. Other things not so much. I, I don't find a lot of inconsistency in that, but.
Well, there's 10 pages and we haven't usually been doing this lately. It's been over a year and a half since any of this has happened.
Can I jump in since I'm the one that wrote them?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. So I was instructed to directly quote everything from the 314 project because it is such a hot topic and.
By who?
You know, we wanted to make sure that everything was documented in case we have to go back and look, then we know exactly what is said and we're not trying to hunt through these recordings on Area 58.
Okay, who told you to do that?
The man who signs that blue check.
Who's that?
Ed Bailey.
Ed Bailey.
Correct.
You actually work for us though. You actually work for us.
I'm going to speak now, I'm speaking, okay? You can look, look at anybody you want, Amy, but you're, you're talking over and I'm just trying to explain because I'm the one, I'm the one that wrote it.
I think, I think what I'm hearing is that we either need to pick subjective or objective writing and if something needs to be quoted, it should be said and I quote. Or I would like to quote for the record. Other than that, it should just be transcribed from the little recorders and avoid all this moving forward. I mean, but also this was a hot topic button. So if somebody wants every detailed sentence in there, then that's all it.
So, so when that being said, some of it, that's only paraphrasing. If it's supposed to all be quoted, it should all be quoted. Because, yeah, so that, so I would ask that anything that's not quoted and just paraphrased, go to the quotes because it's not the, I mean, like honestly, Danielle, you have issue with me and you've had issue with me and to the point that you're telling me that I will not be coming into your office tomorrow?
I'm not going to, we're not going to do this right now. I know you love a good show, but we're not going to do this on the camera, Amy. So if you want to talk to me, you can call me on Monday morning and we'll talk about it. This has nothing to do with me having an issue with you. There is no formula for how these minutes need to be done. It is at my discretion. I am the administrative assistant, I'm the one that writes these minutes and transcribes these minutes.
And we're the one who votes because it's our, our minutes.
Well, it sounds like you're the only one that has a problem with them.
Wow. Again, you will not be coming into my office tomorrow, says Danielle. It's not your office, you work for the planning board and I have respect for that, but you also have to have respect for a planning board member. It is also my office where I can actually look through files. And the reason that I'm putting it on TV is because they need to know what's going on in town because this is disrespect and it's not correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Well, we can talk about that all you want on Monday, Amy, that's fine.
Here's one of the problems with all of this. You either do verbatim everything or someone's going to have to make a decision as to what should be quoted and what shouldn't be quoted. But I don't think we want to do verbatim anything because, because that will just go on forever.
Right, I was surprised when I saw this. I understand the reasoning, but when some people have just, you know, a surmise of what was said and it's not quoted, I find it to be a little bit offsetting.
Well, I mean, just speaking for myself, that one quote that you brought up that Millius told us how.
Yeah, but I wasn't picking on you.
No, no, I understand, but I don't care that it didn't get quoted, is what I'm getting at because that would have been superfluous to the whole thing. But that's a problem when you're taking minutes. Someone has to decide what I need to put in there, how explicit I need to be with it. I, you know, it's, one of the hardest things to do is minutes. I would hate to do minutes for anything.
For sure, but again, we don't, we don't need to have things that are, like for instance, Troop starts talking about something irrelevant. What did I say? That doesn't, that's not, that, that needs to be quoted. So who decided it was irrelevant? So.
Well, if you're asking for, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
It's okay, it happens in a conversation, it's not meant to be.
What am I trying to say? I'm trying to say that if you're looking for a correction, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
For, for, you know, a specific thing. I, I don't know what you said, I don't remember what you said. But if there's other things that are conflicting, we could ask for, you know, for a correction. You know, as opposed to getting too into the weeds with this thing.
Yeah, I'm not trying to get into the weeds. My point is like, I was surprised because I, but I understand why that would be. But if everything's going to be quoted, that we only do quotes and we can't add personality to it based on.
What I'm getting, what I was getting at is if there's particular things that you think need to be expanded on, then we, you know, we can bring those up.
That's why.
As opposed to doing everything.
I know, so this entire problem, in the corporate world at least, we're now using a thing called Dragon AI where we plug it in as soon as the first person starts to speak and they literally transcribe the entire conversation.
Well, like we have on the screen right now.
That's right, and so at the end of the day, in an LLC or in a corporation where you have to show the minutes from the meetings to provide to the IRS in case you get audited, we took that so that I don't have to pay one of my office managers.
That's a transcription of what was said.
What else are we going to do? Sit here, I should be talking to my kids in the bed right now? Instead, instead we're sitting here arguing and I'm going to be very. sitting here arguing and I'm going to be very careful of words coming out of my mouth, because this seems like a very ridiculous conversation to continue to have. So I would like to act in a manner of saying, if we need to make a correction, let's make a correction and let's, or, or not, but let's move on from this conversation because there are far more important things to discuss or to complete this evening, personally.
I agree, so I just would like to move for the corrections.
Does that need to be seconded?
Just ask for it and then we'll take it up at the next meeting.
So we'll address these at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you could make.
It only had a thousand thousand. I found the wallet, but is everybody's wrist?
All right, seeing that next scheduled meeting is for the planning board is March 20th, 2025. I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.